Okay, we are gonna, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We have Denise here tonight instead of Rebecca, is that correct? May you please call the roll.
Flornoy.
Here.
Hallie.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes.
Gandy.
Yes.
Rasmussen.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Two Hill is absent.
Okay. So I do know we have one change to the agenda. We're going to delete on the second page, consideration towards Central Park dining concrete quote, we're not ready for that. Any other changes, council? Okay. We are going to start with a swearing in of a new officer, Philip Smith.
Can we have two minutes? We had a restroom emergency. Uh-oh. It happens at that age.
Now, Connie's gonna do a damn. I don't know any clean jokes. I don't know any jokes. I didn't say clean jokes, I don't know any jokes.
Do you want to call the consent agenda?
Okay, we can do that. Okay, let's do that.
Yeah, that'll give him a couple.
That would kill two minutes.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes of the May 24th, 2021 council meeting. Approval of the May 28th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $121,474.71. Approval of June 11th, 2021 payroll in the amount of $130,444.43. Resolution authorizing funds transfers. Approval of USDA step one debt in the amount of $12,975. Approval of USDA wastewater treatment debt in the amount of $77,295. Approval of general obligation debt in the amount of $13,125. Approval of the May finance report. Acceptance of the Environmental and Franchise Utilities Committee minutes. Acceptance of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee minutes. Consent of park use for Cafe Paradiso, the noise exemption. Consent of park use permit for the Elks Lodge Flag Day Ceremony, noise exemption. Consent of park use permit for Live on the Square, noise exemption for the dates of July 9th, July 30th, August 21st, and September 18th. Resolution approving employment in the Park and Recreation Department. Resolution approving employment in the Fire Department. Approval of liquor license for Fairfield Arts and Convention Center outdoor. I'm not sure how to say this one. Of Verizon Wine Bar Outdoor. I apologize if I said that wrong. The Walton Club Come and Go, number 134. And approval of total claims in the amount of $414,024.80. We had no claims over $75,000.
Motion to approve consent agenda.
Circle.
Moved by Gandy, second by Flornoy. Any discussion?
Real quick, there's been some interest in the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee now that we're posting their meetings on Facebook. I had some people asking about them. If the council's okay with me reaching out, I'd like to invite them to come, tell us what they've been doing, and also encourage them to take a look at what some other cities' diversity committees have done, which is give a kind of an informal policy recommendation for when we appoint boards to try to do that with diverse age group, diverse gender, diverse ethnic background. It's very common for those groups to bring something like that to the city. And they've been around now for almost a year, and it'd be nice to hear from them. So if everyone's okay with that, I've got the email of, I think, the board president.
Yeah, and I can do that.
Yeah.
And I do try to, when we do think of new board members, I am trying to include that idea with we get more diverse people, and I appreciate that point. So, yeah, we can reach out to them. And I know that they have wanted to come. I think it's, you know, they've been doing a lot of self-study and not a lot of outreach at this point, some, but, yeah, so great point, thank you. Any other discussion or questions? Not please call the roll.
Gandy.
Yes.
Flornoy.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Anderson.
Yes, I need to abstain from the minutes of May 24th, though.
Hallie. Rasmussen.
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, now let's try that swearing in again.
Right here, and raise your right hand, and repeat after me. I, Philip Smith.
I, Philip Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of police officer in the City of Fairfield.
Of police officer in the City of Fairfield.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As here or now required by law.
Congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to turn the camera and introduce your family and tell us a little bit about you.
Okay. So I'm Philip Smith. I'm originally from Burlington, been living here for past seven years, and this is my family. That's my son Jensen, my wife, or my wife Rose, and my daughter Mia, and I look forward to protecting and serving the community.
Thank you. Thank you very much and welcome. All righty. So let's move to public forum and appearances. Our first person to address the council is John Congdon.
I'm asking the council to do a rule change about speaking at council meetings. And the current situation is, is that the last day to be able to talk or address council on an issue is the Thursday before the meeting. And if a citizen would want to address the council on something that's on the agenda, that he sees on the agenda, he looks at the agenda that's published on Friday, there's no opportunity to do that, other than to show up and then ask to be recognized. So what I'm proposing is that the rule about being able to speak to council, this is not to put an item on the agenda, to be clear. It's only to address an item that is on the agenda, that isn't published until Friday. And so that would mean that a person would be able to speak to an agenda item, so I'm asking to be allowed to apply to speak until Monday before the meeting. And I think the school board is already set up that way, that a person can apply to speak even to be on the agenda, I believe, until just before the meeting, 15 minutes before the meeting. So it's just a change that would hopefully open up a little bit more interest in what's going on with the, from the citizens, the community going on in city council, and to allow a little bit greater participation. So it's just an avenue to allow more participation from the community, just by shifting that rule that the, because right now we're in a catch-22 situation if somebody wants to speak. It's by the time they find out what the agenda is, it's too late to register to speak on it.
Counsel, do you have any comment about that? I mean, I, one thing that comes to mind is that changes the agenda, right? And we are.
It doesn't actually, I don't think it changed the agenda, it's just allowing somebody to speak to an item that's on the agenda.
Well, my point is that generally we have you speaking, you know, we have it on the agenda when someone wants to speak, and when there's, and when there's things that need public comment, we usually have public hearings. And, you know, I'm not shooting you down, I'm just making those points. So, counsel, what's your pleasure?
I would be in favor of a member of the public submitting a piece of paper that would request to speak to an agenda item on the Monday before the meeting, or the Monday of the meeting. Then you would get the paperwork and you would know what item they want to address.
I support that as well, because it is not changing the agenda that's printed. Otherwise, it's up to the chair's discretion. And I know Mayor Malloy was always relatively gracious about letting someone speak on an item, even when there wasn't a public hearing, but making a more formal process.
Well, then it doesn't come as a surprise to the chair either.
Yeah.
So they're aware of it ahead of time.
And if a lot of people wanted to speak on something, then maybe you could shorten the time each one had, so it doesn't go on too long. But to John's point, that is a catch-22. You know, if I'm a citizen and I see something on the agenda on Friday and I come to council and I have some thought I want to share on it, told, "Well, you're not on public appearance portion and there's no public hearing preceding this item," that doesn't feel very democratic.
And in the past, we've had people jumping up in the back, speaking out of turn without asking to speak to the council, so.
Oh, yeah.
It would prevent that from happening as well.
Yeah, I'm sure there's some precedent set by other cities that do have some.
I was wondering about that, too, now that everything is so electronic, we can see it out ahead of time and know. But I guess I would like to see, then, that we would just hold to like that two-minute rule or something where, you know, because most people can get out that opinion within a couple of minutes, and, but if they had the application in by noon, that way they're not dragging it out for the people working in the office and preparing for the meeting ahead of time.
Well, I was.
Because most people would see it on Friday and know that they would be getting in, you know, it doesn't take too much to get yourself onto, to make a request to speak.
Yeah, well, I mean, if you want to cut it off, noon seems like a little bit of a cutoff, because the agenda's not actually published until Friday afternoon. And so then the window would be four hours Monday morning. So I would, I would think it would be okay to do it at least until the end of office business hour on Monday.
John, do you have any comment?
I do.
As kind of your parliamentarian here.
You have two situations. We're all in favor of public.
I'm a microphone.
No, let me, let me switch. Stay put, too, as you chime in. One of the things that we've done for years is use our request-to-be-heard form, and that's always worked pretty well as far as planning whether you're going to have an overflow of two-minute speakers. And sometimes we plan to actually have a meeting where people are just heard and there's 20 of them.
You're talking about the Thursday noon deadline form?
The, yeah.
You're calling that the request-to-be-heard?
Yeah, the request-to-be-heard form that's in your agenda items tonight, it actually is part of the agenda. So your speaking tonight is part of the agenda, and the agenda as a broad characterized item is what the media's entitled to. And the media's entitled to 24 hours of greater notice of what it is we're going to be doing here. So I don't know if the media will object if we start playing with our rules so that we have some last-minute deals or not, but they could object to that. So I have a couple of thoughts. One is, the agenda's usually pretty well made up by Thursday night. There could be a tentative agenda posted, which would give most people an idea of what's coming. It's not going to be finalized until Friday as far as what you get on your tablets, but then we've got the weekend before we get into this on Monday, and the agenda that the media's working from, and whether they send people over here to cover us or not, is based on what they picked up on over the weekend, not the end of the business day on Monday. So if they're going to object to being left out of some of what's going to be talked about, it's probably about what happened sometime during the day on Monday that they weren't made aware of. And if it's an emergency, we can still make them aware of a change in our agenda. But, I mean, if we have 15 people come in that want to have two minutes each on some topic that is in the agenda, but we didn't anticipate 15 people want to talk about, we're going to end up having to reschedule to talk anyway, and that's kind of the experience we've had on a couple of controversies already this year, so. Parliamentary, Doug's right, you can bring something in and you can waive your rules and talk about it, and it's probably not slanted towards depriving the media of knowing what we're doing. But, again, this whole thing has worked pretty well in the past as far as the request-to-be-heard. And so I guess I'd, I'd encourage you to, you know, as Doug says, you can use your discretion, but I don't know if I'd change the request-to-be-heard rule from what you've got right now and then take it on a case-by-case when you have something come up that maybe is last-minute. That's the only way I can see it. Other than that, I suppose we could ask all of the media what they think about it. We've had a few times in the past when media has disagreed with us if we were doing something they thought was not exactly open meetings.
Is it reasonable to push our posting of our agenda back further than Friday noon, like Thursday?
Good, well, we, normally Rebecca has a tentative agenda for review out Thursday morning or even Wednesday evening.
Right.
We could put up, put something on our webpage for, or on Facebook, here is the tentative agenda, to allow somebody to fill something out.
Okay.
Or if we wanted to.
Tentative two days earlier.
Or if we felt like we needed, we normally only have public hearings for things that were legally obligated to have public hearings for. If we got a request, or if the mayor got a request for a public hearing or public comment regarding a specific item, we could add the public hearing portion to something, I think, kind of like along the lines of what John and Doug are saying.
Nice, John, a clarification. My understanding was that public appearance is, for example, the request for a street closure. Now, that's an agenda item because they're asking us to vote. But a citizen wanting to mention something or talk about something the council's already voting on, that's not a change to an agenda, or is that somehow a change to the agenda that we had a public hearing?
I think you're getting a request right now to change a rule that you've used for several years, so.
Well, but that's, that's why he's on the public appearance, but he's, what he's talking about is if a citizen just wants to come and talk about an agenda item as published and has something to say about it, for the council votes, does that substantially change the agenda? They're not asking for us to, not asking us to discuss a new item that wasn't printed, they're asking to have input on an item. We invite people all the time to talk about items that we're about to vote on. You know, sometimes we invite a DNR expert or DOT or engineer, et cetera, and they come and they stand there and we talk to them, and then we vote. So what's the difference if it's them or if it's John or anyone from the citizens? I don't understand, he's not, we're not asking, they're not asking to address an issue, they just want to comment on something on our agenda? That doesn't change the public meeting law, does it?
The idea of the agenda is to be as specific as you can, so the media understands what we're doing. And if you just have somebody that's here for comments, I mean, it's not ad lib. He's got a purpose for being here, and essentially the media wants more than ad lib.
So I'm going to look into this, but I think the City of Etumal may have a portion of their agenda that's for people to make comments before they get into the business of the meeting. And it's just there.
You can decide if you want to, if you want to have something that is not structured to talk about specific action items, you just want people having a chance to sound off?
Well, we could.
I've heard of it called that before at another one of my councils, so.
Okay. Well, we could at the public forum, but I don't think John's asking us to change a rule. I think he's asking us to add an opportunity for the public to address an agenda item.
Yeah.
So we could keep the public forum and the documentation needed for that the same, and then like Michael suggested, we could add under resolutions, actions, and items and ordinances, we could add another slot there where people from the public who wanted to address the council on an agenda item, they could have that opportunity to do it then, or we could ask them to put on a piece of paper and when the item comes up for a vote, then they can address the council at that moment before we vote.
Many of your action items come with a public hearing, and during the public hearing, if you want to waive your parliamentary rule, it usually restricts it to discussion among the council, you can open it up to public input. So, I mean, there'll be some issues like that, that you may want to do that. So that would satisfy.
Right.
John on a.
So for example, someone who wanted to address this first action item, you know, the McClure Engineering Improvements Contract, you know, John could submit a request to speak to that item, give it to the mayor, so that when that item comes up, she could call on John, she would know that he wants to speak to it, and he could make his comments.
Right.
I'm going to take her that.
Would that be a change, then you would have to apply to the mayor ahead of time, and then what's the cutoff, or cut of time? Well, if we're then requesting the mayor to be able to speak.
Well, she runs the meeting, so you have to ask her permission to speak.
Yeah, but as I'm saying is, you know, if that petition to speak, or request to speak, could it be extended until end of business on Monday?
Yeah, school board allows you to do it 15 minutes before the meeting starts.
Right.
So a concern I have, maybe you could speak to this, Doug, what about notice to other citizens? If you have a citizen who decides they want to speak at end of business day, or let's say 15 minutes before the meeting, and no other citizen knows about it, and perhaps that citizen wants to respond or also speak, but they wouldn't be motivated to do so unless they knew someone else was speaking. Are we losing a, are we losing some level of notice to other citizens when you allow someone to ask to speak, or not citizens, anyone, to speak and give them permission so shortly, so soon before, before a city council meeting?
The school board has Fairfield District people who want to speak fill it out, and they always address the board before the whole agenda is even opened up. And the Board of Supervisors have their general comments at the end of their meeting. So it's not in the flow of the meeting, it's either before or after. I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration. So that way, when, when these boards are in their full flow, they're not stopping to do, so the address is made either before or after. And that's, again, just a.
Yeah, I think the school board changed that rule a few years ago. It used to be they would, when I was on the school board, a member of the public could address the school board on a particular agenda item at the time of the, because the member of the public is here to lobby, to influence our vote.
Right.
And so, you know, they were allowed to speak to the agenda item at the time that we were voting, regardless of we voted. As far as Paul's question, I, you know, I don't know how you would get to everybody.
What if 10 people, 15 minutes before a meeting, decide, ask to speak for two minutes?
That does happen.
Sure. It's rare, but it does happen.
How does the school board handle that?
We listen.
For the 10 people?
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
That's our job.
Okay, and what about the notice to other citizens, other people?
It's the, it's made public that we're talking about these items already on the agenda.
And they know that if we had this rule in place, they know that people could come here and speak for or against any particular item. So it's really, and their due diligence to be here if they want to be here.
Shall we research this just a little bit and see how other people do it, and then bring back some options before you make a final decision?
Yeah. What you're talking about right now, Your Honor, is you've got a book of rules of proceeding for the council you've adopted, so start there, and then if you want to amend some, let's say, maybe that becomes an agenda item that gets talked about next meeting, maybe.
Yeah, our rules of procedure address all this stuff, and I am curious, I think.
That's basically Robert's rules.
It's basically Robert's rules, and it's, it's how we do it, which is, you know, every different cities do it differently, but it shows how we organize our agenda and all the things that John was mentioning, that a citizen has to get in, you know, Thursday noon before they've seen the agenda, which is backwards.
Well, and I would just like to comment, you know, because earlier, a couple of months ago, we had a very controversial issue, and, you know, I did not allow comment that night because I felt like we only had one side, and, and we had another side that I think was as passionate as one side, and so I didn't think it was fair. That's why I requested that it be put on the agenda the following week. So, and that's probably rare, you know, that kind of thing, that's, that's, that's going to happen, but at any rate, yeah, John?
Well, I think that, again, that that's rare, that type of occurrence.
Yes.
Is rare. And then the second thing is, if you see that coming up, then you would have the authority to decide to, okay, we need to open this up to a public forum. So that would be a shift, you know, which I think is very agreeable, but, I mean, it's something that would happen very rarely.
So if I understand you, the scenario would be you have, say, 10 people, for example, show up one evening, they give a notice 15 minutes before, the mayor would decide, well, we're not going to have you speak, we're going to put this on the agenda for the next meeting.
Right.
And send them home.
What you.
That's a prerogative, though, as a chair of the committee, of the council.
You just want to avoid giving the appearance that you're now fixing your final agenda 15 minutes before the meeting. That's not the open meetings law.
Well, I would counter that, that the items are already on, the agenda is already made, so it's just addressing a point that would bring new information perhaps to the council's ears, but it's not changing the agenda.
But it really is.
Well, actually, the real advantage here is if we publish your agenda on Friday and someone sees an item on there that they'd like or do not like, they could call me at home, or call anyone here, they could call all seven of us, which they've done before, right, and speak to us individually. I don't favor that method of lobbying. I prefer that we all get information from the same person at the same time, and this would alleviate that issue, meaning, yeah, you could call a council member and tell them which way you think the item should be voted on, but I would prefer the person to be allowed to come here and talk to us as a group, you know, together at the same time. But what's the difference between those two scenarios?
I think it still comes back to your discretion as far as how you want to conduct your meeting, and it comes back to, you know, if you have 10 people, probably that is a topic for discussion all on its own about do you want to have this back on the agenda the next time and have it noticed out so that public on both sides come and input if you're going to have that kind of a public hearing. Most of the time, I would agree, the types of things you see on the public forum and the requests for council consideration are more like street closings, using the bandstand and things like that, but we do have substantive comment on different things on the agenda beside that. So. So, it's your discretion.
Councilman Rasmussen, you were going to speak, if you would. Martha? Martha, you were going to speak, I'm sorry. You were going to say something a minute ago?
I think by doing, I mean, I guess feel that people do have the opportunity, once the agenda is published and does come out, that if there are items, then many times, there are items that were going to be brought by an individual anyhow, which we thus have already put on the agenda. And I think the idea of people coming in sort of at the last minute to speak, I think it's going to really be disruptive as far as the council and taking care of businesses concerned. I think there's none of us but what are happy to listen to the thoughts and the discussions and the concerns of individuals. But there has to be some orderliness to it. And I'm afraid if we were to make this kind of a change, it's really kind of opening up a lot of doors that I'm not so sure how well they'll work.
Well, I think the, you know, the purpose of government is actually to serve the people. It's not the purpose of the people to serve the government. I mean, that's a very fundamental United States in the Constitution. One of those is redress of a grievance. So, I mean, it's, all's I'm asking for is to open up a better line of communication between the people of the city and the council. And if they have, you know, so that they become interested in what's going on in the city. Because we do, I believe, want citizen involvement in what's going on in the city.
John, I do hear what you're saying, and I appreciate, I really do. I appreciated seeing this on, this request on our agenda tonight. But I think what I'm hearing is we all want to weigh that out now and bring our best decision forward. But tonight, I don't think is the night to make the decision automatically. I think it sounds like we need to weigh it out and then come back and discuss it. And so, that would be my motion, is that we would have it on the agenda for the next meeting. For the...
Do you want to push this to a committee?
I can't decide which committee to push it to.
I was just looking, I'm trying to figure out which committee it makes.
I know.
Committee of the whole, I suggest.
In other words, the council.
Committee of the whole. That's us.
That's all of us.
In other words, the council.
Well, so, Aaron, would you mind kind of taking a poll privately? You know, with the council members and...
Careful. Yeah, I don't know if I can actually do a poll like that.
Well, just kind of get their thoughts, that's all I'm saying.
But what I'll do is I...
What they prefer?
I think what I can do is, I think what I can do is do, Michael just pulled up Etumwa's agenda, and they have a spot for...
Identification of citizens desiring to comment on agenda items.
And what we could do is, we could allow that, but it's very specific to agenda items and two minutes.
Yeah, that's what we've been talking about all night.
Yeah.
Is that at the beginning of the meeting?
It's after consent, before they get into their action items.
Okay, so, kind of in that public appearances area.
But it's identification.
So, it's identification. So, when you get to that topic, then, okay, John, you can come up and talk about...
That's really what we're talking about here, except here, we suggest filling out a form rather than...
They just make it a standard part of their agenda. And then, at the end, they have a public forum where people are allowed to come up and talk about things not on the agenda.
The thing, I don't mind that as long as it's structured. As a lot of you heard me say, this is a business meeting. It's not a...
Public forum?
Public forum, per se. And some things just aren't appropriate to be talked about. We've had a couple of those where they've tried to talk about stuff that the council shouldn't be talking about or discussing. So, there's some control that I like to have as far as our meetings. But on the flip side, I think there is always a good way to have public input. And as long as it's under a controlled situation, I'm fine with having something like that, or I think would be a good idea.
But they're not filling out a paper, right?
No, they're coming and saying, I have, I have, I have a discussion topic regarding consideration to accept wastewater treatment improvement project as final. That they would have to, A, tell us what they want to talk about and which action item it is. And then, you could, you as mayor, or we could, they could come in and tell us, and we would have that listed as part of the agenda for, so that you would know that, hey, John Cogden wants to talk about this.
Can I make a suggestion?
But we wouldn't also, I mean, we would still, if somebody wants to do one of these things specifically, a street closing or whatever, we're not really changing that. We really want them to fill out a paper for that, right?
Right.
That's not going to change.
Yeah, if you actually want to address council regarding a subject, regarding street closures or something, that would require filling it out by Thursday at noon so that we can put it on the agenda so that we can get the agenda published on, at appropriate time on Friday.
That's if a citizen is asking us to take action.
Take action, yeah.
So, can I make a suggestion? Some of us just go and do a little bit of research like you suggested, find out how other councils, what Robert's Rules has to say about it. Bring it back to council, couple, three or four different ideas for informational purposes, and we can decide where to go from there.
Okay, so, are you saying just everybody's going to look on their own? Or do you want to send it to a committee?
Well, I don't know which committee. I think committee of the whole is my best suggestion for that.
Okay.
That gives us also a chance to have discussions with individual citizens in Fairfield.
Sure.
That is a good thing.
So, if you'll all...
Might even call Etumwa and find out how they actually handle it when it comes up.
So, you'll all do your homework, including Aaron?
Yeah, I'll take care of it. I can call Etumwa.
And then, we can talk about it. We'll put it on the agenda for next, or next meeting.
If we get each person who has a suggestion to put it in writing and add it to the agenda so we can all have documentation before Monday night's meeting, so we can study it beforehand?
Sounds good. Any objection to that, anybody? All right, let's do that. Okay, thanks, John.
Yeah, so if I wanted to come at the next meeting, and, you know, and if there was something I wanted to address, then I would just request your permission then to address that? Or how would that work?
That's what we're going to try to figure out.
I think we're going to try to figure that out, so we...
But I mean, that's the way it is right now.
So, everybody's in agreement of what the process will be.
But that's the way it is right now.
We aren't changing anything tonight, other than hearing your request. And we're going to do some research, and then in two weeks, we're coming back to finish it.
I understand that. So, I was just wanting to clarify that, you know, that there's still, like, the opportunity to address the council.
Well, that's what we're going to try to figure out, where to put it in.
Yeah, I mean, I've come tonight, and now it's being postponed to the next time. Now, does that mean that I have to redo a process, or...
No.
No.
Yeah.
No.
Okay.
Nope, we'll make a final decision at the next meeting.
And we'll give John the opportunity to speak to it?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what you're asking.
Yeah, that's what I basically, yeah.
We agree to that, then I'm okay with that.
Yeah, okay.
We know formal action on that?
Well, I was going to say, do you want a formal motion on that, council?
Sure.
Yeah.
What was it?
Go ahead, Doug.
I make the motion that the committee of the whole does some research on how we can receive a public input that's on our agenda items and that we ensure John here that he will have an opportunity to speak to this at the next council meeting. We'll bring our suggestions back.
It's been moved by Florinoy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Hallie. Any other discussion? Now, please call a roll.
Florinoy?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Okay, the next item is street closure. Deanna Julson, Farmers Market.
Did you all see the form that got filled out? That's, so, we're just basically, at the beginning of the farmer's market outdoor season in May, had a few people, customers, and I have some vendors who have expressed interest in permanently locating the farmer's market on Grimes Street between Court and Main on the south side of Howard Park. And we do that now when it rains to preserve the grass and everything in the park, to, you know, to keep it from getting trodden down. And it comes up, oh, we would like to be in the street regularly, but we're not sure if that is, like, one or two people, and they're telling that to every board member, or we're just not sure of if that's a real, would be an advantage to the customers and to the vendors. And so, we've had the idea, well, we should have an opinion poll of vendors and customers that would maybe run for a month and just have, you know, people say, express their preference. Not, and then we realized, well, if we're going to take a poll, we should find out if it's even possible to close the street every Saturday. And so, that's why I'm here, is just to see if that would be something that the, I don't even know the process of, there's my scribbly application. I don't even know if that is the...
This is the process for doing that?
This is the process for doing that?
You want us to close it this Saturday, for example? If you wanted us to close it this Saturday, for example, this would be the way you'd do it.
Unless it was, oh, but, so the thing is, we want to find out if that's something that could, you know, that could be approved before we say, we, you know, put it out as, to poll people.
So, council, is there objection to closing that street every week?
When they were doing it, I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, I had a resident that lived on Grimes, and his driveway was to Grimes. He could not get out, and when he asked people to move to get out, they were somewhat indignant about it. So, with people living on there and having driveways there, I would caution us to close that every week.
Nobody lives on that street, between those two, between Main and Court.
There's the McElhaney House.
The McElhaney House people, somebody lives there.
But that person, I've heard, is no longer living there.
I don't, I'm not aware of that.
So, that's who you're talking about?
I don't know.
Okay, I thought you were talking about some other resident.
The McElhaney House people were very unhappy. In fact, you know, I think they came to us and asked us on Saturdays to be sure and request the fact that parking places would still be available. Because they do have, you know, quite a few meetings oftentimes on Saturday and things. And some of the people from the farmer's market were thus parking in front of the McElhaney House, and their people couldn't use the parking. So, I mean, we sort of settled that, and they did, we did sign the McElhaney House on Saturday for those.
You say that you do this already when it rains?
Yes.
But you don't come and talk to us about that beforehand?
We understood we had permission. I don't know, I just knew that that's...
So, you're doing it already when it rains?
Right, we thought we had permission to do that.
Standing permission, not that I'm aware of, but...
Well, they have flipped down signs on both sides of that street. That they used to just flip every Saturday.
I thought they were requested to do that so to keep the park grass nice. Is that not correct?
We made a resolution at some point in the past where we gave them standing permission.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Saying generally, I mean, that's a very congested area during farmer's market. I mean, it would, as the Chair of Public Safety and Transportation, to me, it would make sense just because there are so many people in that street crossing, little kids running. I mean, unless there's some reason not to close it, it actually seems like a really good idea.
I think the people flow is better.
That's the thing, it's been people with accessibility issues because you have, you know, the vendors setting up wide part on the street, and then all the traffic, foot traffic is down through the middle, and it's level and even, and it's not so congested. Like, if you just have a sidewalk between two rows of vendors, then it's, there's, it's just more crowded. So, that, I mean, we're not, I'm the market master, and this information has come to me. And so, we're just all trying to figure out, well, how do we know if it's real? Like, if it would really help that many people? And, I mean, for myself, as a vendor, the, being in the park with the shade is much more appealing than just being out on the street where it's probably 15 degrees hotter than underneath the trees, especially when, you know, in the heat of the summer. So, that's why we just don't know if what the truth is, or what, you know, who would be the best served by either situation.
What month do you run market at Howard Park? What month do you run the market at Howard Park?
May through October.
I would make a motion that we close that street on Saturday only, farmer's markets, May through October.
Okay, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that. I would like you to also speak with the neighbors of that park around that block where you're talking about blocking it off. That would be good, that you talk with them as well.
I know for sure that when we have set up that driveway, the McElhaney House driveway that comes, that exits onto Grimes, or enters onto Grimes, is not blocked by, you know, a vendor, but the street is closed off, so they couldn't really get in and out. There is parking on the south side of the McElhaney House, in, between the courthouse and McElhaney House, there's diagonal parking there. So, you're saying you want us to ask the McElhaney?
I just think it'd be the neighborly thing to do, to let the neighbors know that you're even considering this.
Well, so, so the thing, yeah, so this is just to, we wanted to know, would it be okay if we did that, and then take a vote, or take a poll for about a month from the customers and the vendors to find out, you know, what the preference is before we would actually act on anything?
Could you do those two things and come back in July, or next meeting?
I would like to conduct the poll for a month because you don't have the same customers every week and the same vendors. You know, some of them come and go. So, we could come back in the...
July.
What are we, in Ju, so the middle of, or the first meeting in July? Okay, we could do that?
So, give it a try, and that's what we're making the motion for you, to just go ahead and give it that try and do your poll.
Do the poll.
And see how it's working, and people will be letting you know.
Okay, so, all right.
So, the motion is to close.
Right.
So...
Until October.
We should probably shorten that, I would think.
Through, it goes through October.
I know her motion was to close it until October.
It sounds like you're test, it's a test, you're testing it right now.
Yeah, we're just testing.
So, we don't want to give them, yeah.
We don't really, but, yeah.
So, I'm willing to amend if, once my original motion has to die, right?
Well, she seconded it.
Okay.
You can amend it.
I can amend it now?
Well, anybody can amend the motion, yeah.
Okay, so I'll amend my motion for a trial period through July? Is that what you'd like?
We don't want to try, we continue to set up in the park and then just be conducting a poll to find out.
Oh, okay.
So, we don't need to take any action?
Pardon?
We don't need to take any action tonight.
But the main thing was just, like, we didn't want to take a poll and say, oh, everybody wants to be in the street, and then not have the approval to be in the street, if that makes sense. So...
Okay, so you want to withdraw the motions?
Oh, yeah, I can withdraw it.
Okay. And you're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so we have no motion on the floor.
We're open to it if that is what you'd like to come back and request.
Just draw the, okay. So, then you'll come back next month.
The first meeting in July.
And kind of let us know.
After the poll.
Right, after we do our poll.
But we do hope that you heard us say, we don't have the objection if you would do that on Saturdays. I want to clarify that, too, so you're sure. We don't have an objection to you wanting to do that if your poll shows you that that's what you need to do.
And then, when I spoke with whoever I talked to, Dawn, I think, she said that even if you approve it, it doesn't mean that we have to, we have to do it.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right.
So, we haven't voted on anything?
No.
We haven't voted on anything.
It's been rescinded.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
So, resolution, action items, and ordinances. Our first action item, consideration of McClure Engineering Wastewater Treatment Improvements, Engineering Services Agreement, Amendment Number Three. This is an increase of $98,000... Number Three. This is an increase of 98,900, I believe?
Yes. And Alex, this was one of the two items that we forgot to put on the agenda last time. As a refresher, the, there are still some grant funds in the wastewater treatment plant project that are unspent. They're the last items, or the last dollars that get spent on the project. And so this amendment is for McClure to do some engineering on a couple other, I'll say, wants that were originally taken out of the project for budgetary reasons. One of them is to replace one of the steel tanks that we use to store sludge. It's getting close to the end of its useful life and we would need to be doing it in a couple of years anyway. And then the other is for some additional lighting.
Is this one left over because we had low bids?
Um, no, this is because the project has drawn out through two city administrators, two city clerks and a new engineer. And some money was double submitted to USDA. And so we thought we had spent more money than what we did. And so we, we were really good at saving during the project only to find out that we didn't need to.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson. Any other discussion?
Where the money came from?
Right.
Not, please call a roll.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Thank you. Consideration to Accept Waste Water Treatment Improvements Project as Final.
Say it's final or substantially complete?
It says final.
Okay. So the document that you have is actually substantial completion. This occurred back in January and we forgot to file the paperwork. McClure forgot to file the paperwork with the council. So we would request that substantial completion occurred in January. That means that in January, we took full operation of the plant. Obviously, there are still some punch list items remaining, which is why it's not final final, but substantially complete.
Does that make the motion? We consider the WWTP improvements as substantially completed as of January 2021.
Second.
So the, the language in the agenda should be amended to show, or the motion's going to show as substantially completed, not as final?
Correct.
Correct.
And the document showed substantially completed, not final.
Right. Agenda does not.
It's just a typo.
The warranty, the warranty takes into effect at the substantial completion date, which is different than other projects. But I'll say everyone has been assuming that this, that the warranty date started in January. We just forgot to bring it to the council for approval.
So our vote today does not change that date?
Yeah.
Okay. So Doug, you, you moved to prove that, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
To prove it as being substantially completed in January of this year.
And did anyone else second? I don't think I heard a second.
Martha did.
Oh, Martha did? Okay. So there was a second. Any other discussion?
I've already said, I just want to be clear, it's not final.
Correct.
Yeah.
Please call the roll. Denise?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Prove unanimously. Next resolution is consideration of resolution amending Resolution Number 3065, Procedure to waive requirement for appraisal to increase low fair market value.
So when the city acquires property, we can choose to do an appraisal on any, any property that we are acting on. On the Highway One project, we chose to do it on projects, people that have a relationship with the city, so to maintain transparency. But per our code or per Resolution 3065, we actually set a dollar amount that anything above 10,000 has to have an appraisal and anything below can be done through compensation estimates. 3065 was set eight years ago when we did, started with the wastewater treatment plant land acquisition. The state allows a higher threshold, but in talking with John Morrissey, we'd like to just bump that up to 15,000 to kind of, you know, accommodate higher land values.
I'd move to amend Resolution 3065 to reflect a low fair market value of $15,000.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion?
That just means to increase the low fair market value. That's what you're saying?
Yeah, change this from 10 to 15.
Right.
Yeah, it just means that anything with a possible value of 15 or more, we have to do an appraisal on. We may choose to do it on, on it if it's less than, but this sets a limit for that higher value. And it's going to come into play on the next one with Jefferson County Hospital.
Okay. Please call a roll.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Rasmussen?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Thank you. Prove unanimously. Next resolution, consideration of resolution establishing just compensation for the highway reconstruction project parcels 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 22.
Okay. Yes, okay. So at the last council meeting, we approved just compensation estimates for several of the parcels. We had removed one of them because there was a typo in the spreadsheet. And so two of the items, Jefferson County Hospital and Emmanuel Lutheran Church are based off of compensation, compensation estimates. And then parcels 2, 3, 4, 5, and 7 are all owned by neighborhood builders, which is why, and that's a much larger amount of acres. And so that an appraisal was done for those. What you're seeing here in Section Two, those amounts, that is what's being offered. Again, if there is any changes in negotiation, if there's vegetation that's being added, those come back to as a second resolution. So this is a starting, this is the land value. There are still other things that get associated with each of these properties. So just to be clear, we're only, this is only land value. And it's basically authorizing JCG to start here, start at this point. So again, that is 1803 and 1805 parcels 2, 5, and 7 at $60,000, $60,350. Parcels 3 and 4 at $40,550. 2,000 South Main at $12,145 and 1601 at $8,775.
Motion to approve just compensation for the listed parcels.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. Any other questions or discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Thank you. Prove unanimously. We have a first reading of an ordinance to amend solid waste rates. Aaron or Doug, who wants to speak about this?
These, these were the, what we, what I did was I went and took the old fees and just added what we had talked about earlier to add, to become up with the total amount that we had talked about.
Yeah.
And so this is just adding those ordinance, those rates into ordinance like we normally have to. The one thing John has gone through for the solid waste rate, we have to add a severability clause and effective date on that one. But otherwise, he's, he is okay with both of these ordinances.
One of them said July 1. And at the bottom, it also said effective date as of, they weren't going to match, I don't think.
Did I miss one? I might have missed it.
Can you open up this?
On the, after
We'll try the first one. I can't remember where I saw it.
It froze earlier when I tried to, so we'll see.
I've got them both here. The effective date for the recycling says effective date July 1, 2021. The ordinance shall, after its final passage approval publication, provided by law, be in full force and effect.
And so they kind of conflict with each other.
We, we can adjust that.
Just strike that effective date at the top.
We need the effective date, but I can move that, the, this paragraph of effective date down into, or move the date down into the effective date section there. And just make sure there's a severability clause and a effective date, just like it is on, for the solid waste and the recycling sections.
How soon do you need these passed in order to have them billed for the July month, month of July?
We have to, we'll have to pass, pass them on, or we'll have to have the third and final reading on in June, or the last meeting in June.
So you're
So we'll have to skip a reading.
Your solid waste rate says effective April 1, 2012.
Sorry?
Your solid waste says effective April 1, 2012.
So it's just a typo?
Yeah. I missed that. Because I was going, it was adjusting from a PDF to a Word document and back and it, yeah.
Let me fix those typos and I'll motion to move it from the first to the second reading.
Yep.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Then we can do, we can skip next.
Okay.
Skip the reading next meeting, maybe.
No, we still have to do the third reading.
You could have done that the next reading too, or next meeting. You can approve the first reading correcting the typos.
We want the corrected version.
And then, and then go to the second. If you're okay with the corrected version, then you can waive, amend the rules, waive the second, approve the third.
That's what I'm suggesting we do.
Okay. So motion by Flornoy.
First or second reading?
To the first or second reading. This is on a solid, I'm going to take these separate solid waste rates. It's going to 856 a month. And a second by Anderson. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Okay. Next ordinance, amending the recycling rates to 456 a month, if I can read my writing right.
I made the motion that we move this from the first to the second reading.
Second.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Rasmussen. Any other discussion? Not, please call a roll.
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Under the mayor's report, we have a couple appointments for the Carnegie Museum. We had two people resign, Mary Keller and Shelley Urban. So the board has asked me to appoint with your approval, Sean McCarty and John McCurley. So I would take, entertain a motion to approve those two people.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson?
Second.
Second by Ham. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great, thank you. I would just like to note that on Saturday, there was a ceremony to open the Natty Land, approximately 40 acres just north of Waterworks Park. It was a beautiful day. We had a good crowd there. And I want to publicly thank Bob Natty and his family for this generous donation to our community. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the Natty Land, or Natty Land Committee, Ron Blair, and all of the people who participated. It really was a, a group of, lot of wheels turning, and a lot of, lot of people making it happen. And it really is a beautiful thing. And they had a great vision for that land. And after many years, I'm not sure when that came to us, in 2011, 12, 13, and somewhere in that neighborhood. So it's been many years for planning and it's finally open. I just want to say that Restored Prairie is our heritage. It's our history. And, and as our city progresses, we also have that balance of our feet planted and grounded in our heritage and our history of that beautiful prairie land. So I really hope people can get out and enjoy it, get on that trail that they have mowed there and really enjoy it. And again, thanks to the Natty Land family for this beautiful gift to the city that will be used for generations to come. So thank you so much for that. And not only for us to enjoy, but as was so eloquently stated there, that, you know, it's, it's a huge gain for the bees and the butterflies and other wildlife, and also as a filter for the two water bodies that are there. So it has many aspects to it that will be a great asset to our community. So thank you all for participating in that. John, Cindy attorney report, do you have anything?
Just a couple. Second, what you say about Natty, it's in a conservation preserve easement that will guarantee at least four more generations of nice things happening out there. Other than that, next meeting, we've got something that is not litigation at this point, but it is a pending matter that the city is a lesser player in. But we need to have a closed session to talk about that with the council. So I'll just mention that now and we'll get it on the agenda for next time. Okay?
Great. Thank you, John. Committee and board reports, personnel?
Tonight at 6, the Personnel Committee met with two agenda items. The first one concerning the city COVID-19 sick leave for employees and the time to remove that emergency measure and just return to regular operations. So the motion was made to deactivate the emergency procedures for contagious disease policy, subject to the council approval and feedback from the department heads as of June 30, 2021. So we're making that recommendation to you tonight. And the second item is concerning what is taking place as we have city employees who are not fulfilling the longevity of their contracts with the police department and that affecting then three departments within our city of the city attorney's office, City Hall, and the work that Denise is doing here, administrating all those contract work. And then also at the police department administration work. There is a letter that the police chief wrote to us so that we could begin the discussion. And I will be glad to email that to you. But you would need to forward any of your questions to the police chief. But what we're making for a recommendation tonight is to recommend the full council give authority to John to help us work the contract language and to bring it back to council for full approval then, and how we're going to be wording our contracts going here out. And once you read the full letter and the full circumstances and the proposals, we would just like you to see all those first. But tonight, we just want to move forwards to get you guys all the information so that we can then have a deeper discussion. Am I clear on both of those items for you tonight?
Were you wanting a vote on the first item? Are we going to wait to get feedback from the department?
Yes, I guess we're making the, the motion. So on the first motion to deactivate, I would open that up, yeah, open that up to council for, to receive that motion from us.
So you want to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. So the motion is to deactivate our policy effective June 30. And, but Aaron's going to talk to department heads first.
Right.
Second.
Okay, so, and
Someone, just very briefly, what was the policy exactly? I can't remember. I know we voted on It's a rather lengthy one, but the main thing was that individuals were allowed extra leave specifically for the COVID virus.
Okay.
We had, we had some other issue, not issues, but
Staggering staff and
Staggering staff and stuff like that.
Cleaning phones and
Yeah.
Other hard objects.
All that whole, that whole policy. It wasn't just about sick leave.
No, it was like four or five pages long.
I remember now. I thought it was very specific.
So specifically, it was kind of hard to tell you exactly what it said.
I remember.
Yeah. Okay. So moved by Ham, second by Flornoy. Another question?
Question, I just want to be clear on what is, what are, what are we moving
Question, I just want to be clear on what is, what are, what are we moving to do? To deactivate the policy as of June 30th, subject to something or just deactivated?
Deactivating it. Providing there's no negative feedback from department heads or anything like that.
So part of the motion is you are going to reach out to department heads to get there?
They've already been aware, but if, but I'll talk to them again. And if there's any issues, then I will bring that to the council at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Um, so Denise, why don't you go ahead and call a roll on that?
Ham?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Hallie?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Public Safety and Transportation Committee?
So over the last six weeks, I think, Public Safety and Transportation has had more meetings than I can remember. We've been going through the sections of the, of the city code, the codification that apply to public safety. So, um, at one of those meetings, we also, um, were approached regarding some signage for Carnegie. And then, um, this evening, we had another meeting, the first one without codification in it, preceding the council meeting tonight regarding a request that has been made of us for a parking situation and an outside service to come into town. So regarding tonight, um, we had been addressed by a company called Bird, and it's a scooter company. Um, and they come in and implement a checkout system, a scooter rental system. The city more or less enters into an agreement, our, our participation is nothing, is minimal. But they just wanted a contractor with the city to come in. At this time, Public Safety and Transportation feels we've got some other pressing issues on our docket. And we'd like to push this out and ask a few more questions, and more importantly, evaluate some other Iowa communities that are implementing it to see how it goes. The action item we did have tonight was a request from the school district for no parking on the north side of Jackson Street between, help me, Melanie?
DNE.
DNE. To align with the signage we already have around Washington School, um, the posted hours and everything, to facilitate, um, continue flow of traffic in picking up and dropping off students. So I am officially presenting a motion from Public Safety and Transportation for a one additional block of no parking on the north side of Jackson. We gotta do an ordinance, so what am I asking then? Nothing. The recommendation from council is that we, or from Public Safety is that we do an ordinance.
So when you say, it's like with the same hours as all the others?
Yep.
The same hours.
Same hours, it would be the same exact sign that we have around Washington School for the other unidirectional, no parking.
For drop off and pickup.
Yep, yep. And then at a prior meeting, we had been asked regarding placing some signage down at the Carnegie Museum. And I'll let you listen to what Carnegie and Melanie have to say about it. But the, um, the feeling of Public Safety and Transportation is that we are supportive of their request, especially until the, the more permanent signs are put in by Indian Hills.
Okay, so Jason, if you'll click on that. This is the original cut and paste version of what the sign might look like. But we will be ordering them through Iowa Prison Industries, so they would be reflective. It would be brown with white lettering, um, which is standard for historical markers and similar activities. Where the museum board is requesting to put it is, Jason, if you'll scroll down one, is on Burlington at Court on both sides of the intersection. And those will have a directional arrow pointing, um, south. And then they would, the committee or the board has also requested one right in front of the museum. And that is the one that we're recommending being a tentative one. These signs are not real expensive, um, but the one that's in front of the museum could be used as a spare for the other ones if something would happen. I, I think this is a good thing to put on the signs or put on the poles. But, um, once we have a much bigger new sign out in front of Carnegie, I think the, the sign on the light pole will be a little redundant. So, um, this has Daryl and my support and went to Public Safety for these three locations with the one being a tentative location. And the museum board is paying for the signs as well.
What sign is Indian Hills putting up?
It is, it's a joint sign. Maybe you might have to help me, but it's, um, break? Yeah, I'll let you describe it.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to come and share a few moments with you. In the past, there has only been a Indian Hill sign directly in front of the entire building. Due to, uh, the growth and the exuberance that we seem to have with the museum going now, there is one little sign above the entryway of the doorway that says Carnegie Museum. We have had a lot of out of town people that have come to this community, and they look and they knock on doors at Edward Jones and other places, and where, where is this building? And so we felt that it was important as we complete our new steps and other renovations that we would have a sign that would incorporate Indian Hills as well as the Carnegie Museum. And so it will be a sign about this high, and it will have both names on it. We also have a brand new flagpole that will be installed. Grant application has been submitted to the Greater Jefferson County Foundation for that. And it will have proper illumination that the current sign does not have. And so that way, uh, art walks is one of the times that we plan on being open. We had in the past, and we've already started that program again. So it will be sitted, as you are looking at the building, the walkway is here, and to the right of the walkway is where this new larger sign that Kent Whitney, Whitney Monument Works is preparing for us. We feel that the signage on this piece that you're looking at here, as we try and drum up more business, uh, we are in communication with the FIDA. They have a, uh, a billboard, I guess is the best word for it, south of town. As you would get on at the hospital and go east, we're talking with them about it. At our next meeting, we're inviting Terry Baker, Convention and Visitors Bureau Director, to come and talk about how do we market the building that we have and the exhibits that we have. So we plan on doing a lot of good things in the future. We got a great board, and with the addition of these two new members, we think a lot of good things will be happening at the Carnegie Museum. Thank you.
One thought. In terms of adding to accessibility to the museum, the board and the city could consider going back to the historic two-way on that block. It's the way it was since the founding of the city up until the 1960s. And it would allow for people to come on Court Street from both north and south. And the cost, I think, would be probably in the thousands of dollars for the city because it's essentially doing what we did on Washington Avenue where we power sprayed the stripes just on the one side away and then re-stripe. There's no nodes to shave. I don't think there's really even any signage that would have to be done. But, um, for people coming in from out of town, the one-way streets can be confusing. You benefit from them coming off of Burlington, which is probably the main way they're coming in. But they could also come on Washington, that could be a bonus. So, um, I'm gonna talk to Daryl Bysgard, because I can't remember how much it costs to, to do. But it's just something we could consider as a benefit to the museum. People can come in from both sides of, of Court Street.
Thank you for sharing that. At, at the time that you make that decision, uh, we might come back and request additional signage to come off of Washington then.
Yep, that would be that.
Thank you very much, Michael.
Do you need a motion to approve the signage? So moved?
Second.
Thank you.
Moved by Flornoy, second by Anderson, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Thank you, unanimously passed. Administrator and department reports. Melanie, you want to go first?
Yes.
Lead and copper survey?
Yes, so just a couple FYIs for the council and for the public. I'm in the water bills, the survey that was, that's attached to the agenda went out. We are requesting that every building in Siglitz fills this out. This is actually some new regulations at the federal level that was finalized in December 2020. That we have to inventory 100% of our lead and copper lines. And I will say, this is not, this is not a reflection of something that Fairfield has done. This is a national issue that has come back after Flint, Michigan, and other communities that have had poor water. And so it's a, it's a national mandate that we need to inventory them. The likely results of this is being able to identify the possible amount, number of lead service lines and apply for grant funding using those numbers. That typically what happens with federal regulations is we collect data for five years. We do testing for five years, and then we have five years to implement something. So it's, it's rather a lengthy process, and this is the beginning of it. Um, we do really need everyone to fill this out. We will be calling people, um, you know, later this year that we don't have answers from. So do us a favor and either fill out the paper copies or that link that is on there sends you to a Google survey or a Google form that you can fill out. So, and again, the girls up front can answer any questions people have on the survey, but we really need everyone to, every building to fill it out. The next attachment on the department reports is the bridge report. Every two years, our bridges get inspected. I like to bring this to you, um, just so you're aware of the conditions. This first one is for Crow Creek. The important information is on the right-hand side, where it says condition, patching, cracking is a three. Those scores are nine to zero, with zero being the worst. So Crow Creek is towards the latter half of his life, its life. And, um, it is a good thing that we are, that we received money to replace this. Because, you know, in five years' time, it could be limited to one lane, or it could be limited to a weight if we were not replacing it. So, um, shows what we already knew. The next one is a bridge over Walton Spillway. What I wanted to point out on this is that we just need to keep an eye on it. It is currently posted for one lane, and that needs to stay. That is on the very bottom of that second sheet, um, that it's posted for one lane. And then the last is the B Street Culvert. Culverts over a certain size are fall under the bridge inspection. There is some cracking to the wing walls or the inlet of the culvert. And down just a little, I think down at the notes, um, to monitor the cracking and then reseal the pavement relief joints. And so down there, it also has an estimated cost for that of $30,000. And so that is something that we'll just need to be working into our five-year plan, um, to put some money into those. So again, no action on those items. I'd just like to let you know that we do get those inspected. The pedestrian bridge over the railroad and Highway 1, those get inspected every four years. So two years from now, we'll have those results as well. And then we do have a couple other smaller box culverts that are not required to be inspected, but we are gonna get them inspected just for our, for our master planning, that we can have a condition report on them. They are 30 years old, and we just, we'll have them get looked at by the same company, so. No action, thank you.
Any questions, council, for Melanie on any of that? Okay, Aaron?
The only, only topic I'd like to address tonight, uh, as far as administrators or support, is our meeting coming up on Wednesday with the supervisors. Doug and I have been talking since he, he's one of our 2080 agreement, uh, members about giving him the, a lot of information regarding what we have and what we've presented to the supervisors. If you, as a council, would like more information, or a member of the council would like me to give you more information, we're, I'll be interested to see what we'll, what we hear Wednesday night because, like, we talked, and the reason why we sent the letter earlier is we haven't heard anything back from them. And so I, I don't know what their proposal is. I, I would like to, I would like the council to request, or would like a little bit of permission from the council to request a counterproposal from them, if that's okay, so that we at least have something to think about. But as of, right now, we haven't gotten anything. The only request we had is that they wanted to meet in, during a council meeting. So, um, I, I, I don't want to muddy the waters Wednesday night for us. I don't anticipate us agreeing to anything on Wednesday night, so. But if you have any other questions, I'd strongly encourage you to ask me or Doug, or even Dave, or, uh, Shannon at Dispatch Center for information. Actually, Mayor Boyer is fairly well up on this information too, so. I guess I don't have any other, any other information for that. Did I cover what you wanted, what you thought too, Doug?
I think so.
Okay.
We really don't know what their position is, they know what our position is, but we have no idea what their, what their reaction to it is.
The important thing for us to, or for us to remember, and I, I know it, it's probably gonna be, why are we asking for change? We're, we're asking for an equitable division of costs. We're not, we, essentially, I, from my perspective, we've kind of been stonewalled on that, and we haven't really got the information that we've asked for. And we, we want everybody to have buy-in into this. It's not that we're trying to shirk our responsibilities whatsoever. We want, we're, we're more than willing to pay for our share, but we don't feel like it's an equitable split at this point.
And the city residents are paying, carrying the load on the tax burden for that, uh, part of the building. County residents aren't paying toward the dispatch center.
That's our perspective, and that's why, why we're asking for information. We don't feel like we've gotten enough.
Well, and it's not the building, it's the
Dispatch Center.
The dispatch.
I guess we found out today that there are some rumors going around that we're looking at pulling the dispatch center out of the building and all that stuff. And there, there's no intent of us doing any of those types of things at this point. And I, I kind of was shocked to hear, hear some of those rumors because, like, where, where did those come from? Because it hasn't come from this body, and it hasn't come from my office. Well, you know, we are building a new fire station, you know? So I just started another rumor, so, anyway, sorry.
So Aaron, just a quick background, correct me if I'm wrong, but the agreement initially was that the city would pay for the salary of the dispatch, and that the county would pay for equipment. And it was thought at that time that that would be pretty much even split. But over the years, the city has asked the county to show us what they've spent on equipment, and they've told us, well, it's really hard to tell, it's in multiple budgets. So we've never really got a straight answer. So we're left with this kind of speculation that we are overpaying.
Well, and, and from the same perspective is, is E911 funds, which is a state, E911 surcharge dollars are spent in the dispatch center, which is about a hun, about $105,000 annually. And it's, it's kind of perceived that the county has been using those funds to pay for their portion of the, of the costs for the dispatch center. So then, there is no buy-in from the sheriff's off, or from the county. It's the E911 service paying for it, which that's in, by, at, I suppose by the letter of the agreement, that's okay. But by the spirit, there's, there's no buy-in from the county then. Now, we talked about, we, we found out today that the, uh, the tower was moved by the sheriff, by the county, and that was paid for by the county, not by E911 like it was budgeted. I don't know why they did that, but, you know, that's, that was a $120,000 expense. But I, I don't know why they couldn't tell us that, or give us that information broke down, so.
But that's not necessarily, I mean, I guess you can argue whether that's a 911 expense or not.
Right. Yeah, because that was also, that, that's probably more of a benefit to our, the outlier fire departments than it was anything else too, so.
But the E911, is that a department under the county?
No, that is, it's, it's, it's its own entity, and the county doesn't control that. Shouldn't contrive to control those funds.
Okay. And that was, that, that organization, that, and the funding wasn't mentioned in the 2080?
Correct.
Okay.
Brett puts that budget together?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't know who authorizes him to put that, who, who's that budget?
The 911 board.
That's right, you told me that. But aren't any like the people on that board except?
Well, it's, it's actually supposed to be elected members of the county or their designee. And are currently, the designees for pretty much everybody is the fire chief or police chief for each community, for the 911 Board. EMA is handled by all of the mayors of the county, of this county.
So, the county designated the individual fire chiefs?
No, each elected. I think Ed, in the past, has designated Scott Vaughn as our member. And that's kind of what the other mayors have done, is designated their fire chief for, for that.
And they approve the E911 budget?
Correct.
Would you get, it's not part of the 2080?
Right.
And just so you know, the E911 kind of regular budget, they're spending between 100, 105,000 every year on just their regular ongoing expenses.
In the Dispatch Center.
In the Dispatch Center.
Because that money has to be used for training?
Or equipment.
Equipment.
Or equipment.
For communications, emergency communications.
And the E911 is funded through...
Well, it's funded through...
Your cellphone bill.
Telephone landlines and cellphone landli, or cellphone lines.
Surcharges.
For a surcharge off of those funds.
And a couple small grants.
So, if you do the math, and citizens of Fairfield are about 10,000 of a 17,000, 17 and a half thousand county population, and that fund comes from everybody within the county. So, the city taxpayers are paying for the dispatch employees, and then again, they're paying through that E911 fund for the other portion.
About 60%.
So, 60%. So, we're really slamming our citizens.
And then, if the county use, puts their funds in, then that's probably out of their general basic, which is also 60% of the county's funds, which is from the city.
From the cities.
Which citizens here in Fairfield pay.
Yeah.
But just the salaries alone, it was on the order of $550,000?
Uh, yeah. Is that what I, I don't recall.
Last year, I saw, over $500,000.
Yeah, when you, when you add salaries plus benefits, you're probably talking $500,000 or more. Yes.
Well, if you have any data you can send out to the entire council prior to Wednesday, like, I'd like to know what those, what the city's been spending. We know that. We don't know with the county because they haven't given us that info, but just to have a little bit more numbers.
We can give you and send you 911 stuff, and Erin can get you the, the city spending. And I also have the last five years of the county's spending. However, it's not, it's not completely clear.
Yeah, it's not broken down as far as...
Yeah, for that level of detail.
Dispatch specific. It's broken down as, well, this is what the county, this was part of the 2080 agreement. So, it's maintenance for the building and all that stuff. And unless you know what line item is called, what, for what, you don't know what was spent specifically for dispatch, or if it was just the 2080 agreement, which is maintenance for the entire building.
So, we'll have that, and hopefully, we'll be able to get educated on what items are in their spending that they have paid for. It's just not clear at this point.
After, after talking to Brett, it, it kind of makes a lot more sense to me that we should have one entity handling all of the costs so that it's clear, this is what's spent for this, this organization. And then, you know, that would never, you can't allocate 911 funds as a specific entity unless you're the E911 Board, you know. So, you, that would just be part of the budget, but we wouldn't be controlling that. It would just be more of a, okay, 911 funds come in, this is how much it is, so that comes off the top total cost of the entire organization. And now, the rest of the costs are then divvied up by population, Fairfield, unincorporated county, and then the municipalities throughout the ci, throughout the county, so that everybody knows what we're spending the money on, how much it costs, and divvied out proportionately.
So, if Brett didn't contribute that money to the training of the dispatch workers, would he have something else to spend it?
Uh, no, because it's state obligated to be spent on those things specifically.
He should be, that should be part of the 2080 though.
If it's a separate entity from the city and the county, which you said it is, yeah, it should be in there. Intergovernmental can be more than two governments, so.
I, I don't know if, I can't answer that question as far as legally.
Right. I mean, the county's using that other entity's money as their, it sounds like...
To an extent, I, I think. I think they're probably spending some money that they're, they're just not telling us that they do. But I, but yes, I think the majority of the cost is 911 service, surcharge.
Well, if there's any information that's been shared with some people, I'd like it to be shared with all of us because we're all invited to this meeting. I think we should be as informed as possible, so.
Yeah. Some of the information we just got this afternoon, Michael. So, we're going to get that detail to you.
And Doug and I have been talking because he's on the 2080 agreement, so I've been sending him some information. But I happy, happy to give you all of that information.
Just want to be informed before we meet Wednesday night.
Yep, that's fine.
That it, Erin? Okay.
Long enough meeting.
Yeah. Okay, so I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Anderson.
Second.
Second by Hamm. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.